Hello, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, June 11th, 2020, at 6:30. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. This is an electronic public meeting being held as a Zoom webinar to limit the spread of the coronavirus. So to start off, as we normally do, I'd like to ask everyone to join me in saying the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. To the public, which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, would the secretary take the role, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Absent and excused.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt. Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. If we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Take the role, please.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Our next item is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of May 14th, 2020. We have some corrections on the minutes as presented. The first being an amendment aid to not strike secondhand chops from the existing language. And there was another one dealing with the historic district. Brian, if you could explain that one.
Yep, so that one was for Amendment F. We just suggested that with our recommendation that council approve the proposed amendment, that there be some sort of guidelines established determining what classifies a historic structure site. So we have some guidance where we're not trying to figure out, okay, is this historic, is this not? And have those guidelines established before, you know, we would get any applicants for it coming to us saying, oh, this is historic. And the planning commission having to make the determination of if it is or not.
Okay, are there any other questions or corrections on the minutes? If someone would like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes with corrections. Any other questions? Would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Our next item is public comments on non-agenda items only. I don't see any public online with us. Do we have any?
Fred, we do have, we have two attendees.
Oh, they're currently not showing up on my screen.
If you, down at the bottom where it says participants, if you click on that, it should extend out a box where you can see the panelist listed and then the attendees.
Okay, wait a minute. Now I've lost my picture. Okay, I see a number two down there. Does anyone wish to make a comment? I'll ask again, any public comment on non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on to business items. The first item is request for rezoning of 6332 Middle Belt Road from C2 Community Business District to C3 General Business District. And the first order of business is public hearing. And purpose of the public hearing, of course, is to allow the general public to express their views of the proposed change. Or is there anyone who wishes to make a comment concerning the, well, before we go to the actual public hearing, let's get a presentation from the consultant, if we would, on their report.
Before we go on, Fred, is the applicant present also, Brian?
Is?
Is the applicant present?
Oh, yep, I got, yeah. Fred is the applicant. He's got his hand raised in there.
Okay.
But yeah, so there is an applicant present.
Yeah, so we helped him today to get the link and everything set up, so I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep, and then we can always bring him in, you know, as a panelist when we open it up after the consultant's report.
Okay, thank you.
He would be free to comment during the public hearing if he wishes, or he can wait till we get into the discussion with the commission. Does anyone wish to make a, or I'm sorry, let's get back to the presentation of the consultant's report. If we could have the report from McKenna, please.
Sure. Um, thank you, Chairperson May. My name is Sarah Traxler. I'm with McKenna. And I know, you know, all of you panelists here, but just for those participants or attendees of the meeting, I'm a coworker of Mario Ortega, who wrote the review and wasn't able to attend tonight's meeting because his mother passed away earlier this week. So I'm happy that I could step in in Mario's absence. And of course, I'm very familiar with Garden City's zoning standards and master plan and will walk you through our review. So the subject property is located at 6332 Middle Belt Road and is presently zoned C2 Community Business. The petitioner is requesting a rezoning to C3 General Business. In terms of the frontages and the location of the subject parcels, these are at the southeast corner of Middle Belt and Maplewood. And there's a roughly two to one ratio of the lot frontage on Maplewood versus Middle Belt. So there's about roughly 500 feet of frontage on Maplewood versus 250 linear feet of frontage along Middle Belt Road. This combined area that's subject to the rezoning request is about two and a quarter acres. And you see in the rezoning review in front of you, the three parcels that are subject to the request. So just to set the stage, there's a mixture of uses surrounding the subject property. And we have, of course, Garden City High School to the north. We have single-family residential to the east. To the south is a commercial use Rainy's Bar. To the west is Sports and New Bar and Grill. And all of those properties are zoned from either C2 all the way down to R1. So all of those parcels are zoned, you know, similar to the current zoning classification or in a less intense fashion than that requested zoning. You're familiar with the rezoning criteria in the Garden City zoning ordinance. And those criteria are the standards that we review each proposed rezoning against in order to come up with a reasonable and rational decision in terms of your recommendation to city council. The question that is the first criteria is whether the proposed amendment would be in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of your zoning ordinance. So the beginning paragraph on page two describes really your legal authority to zone and the legal foundations for your zoning standards. At the top of page three, our review gets into specifics related to this application and basically summarizes our findings and recommendations to the city, which is that a rezoning of the subject site to C3 would not be in accordance with the intent of your zoning standard. And as you're aware, the city must consider the full range of uses that are allowed in a proposed zoning district. And in your C3 district, those range from service establishments like contractors workshops all the way up to car washes, drive-through establishments, and so on and so forth after special approval for special land use. The C3 district is the city's most intense commercial district and permits a broad range of high-intensity auto-oriented uses. And by auto-oriented, we don't just mean in terms of access, but also in terms of auto-related uses. So that's where you see your repair shops and auto dealerships and so on and so forth. Locating your current zoning map and zoning ordinance really locates and clusters your C3 zoning at the edges of town rather than in the center of town. Your future land use map designates this exact intersection as the northern gateway to your downtown district or your central business district. So in contrast to where your master plan is planning for the C3, this is actually planning for a different land use and a more downtown-like environment, which look at. Um, in terms of the second criteria, which is will the proposed amendment further the comprehensive planning goals of the city? This is basically asking us, is this request consistent with your master plan? So as I just alluded, the future land use map in your master plan designates these 2.25 acres of parcels as both Central Business District and Flexible Residential. And the Flexible Residential is the eastern parcels along Maplewood, sorry, eastern portion of the parcel along Maplewood. And then the CBD is as you get closer to the middle belt. The the zoning plan in your master plan shows which zoning districts are consistent with those future land use districts. And CBD is advised for your CBD future land use designation, while R2, R3, and Plan Development and R2 are residential districts are advised for the Flexible Residential land use. So as you move eastward on Maplewood on this site, what the master plan is calling for is actually a transition from commercial at Middle Belt to the single-family home and single-family zoning that you see as you proceed eastward on Maplewood. So a transition. In fact, your master plan describes in detail the concept of transitional land use planning, which we rely upon in your master plan. Basically saying that uses should be organized based on this traditional planning concept whereby less intensive development is buffered where practical from higher intensity uses. Specifically, the example that's called out here is one that is shown on the site where Flexible Residential is planned between your commercial designations and single-family uses. To summarize this question, I would just like to say that the proposed rezoning is not in accordance with the future land use map. That the rezoning would not be in keeping with the master plan's future land use concept of transitional land use planning and that it would be contrary to the specific inclusions in your zoning plan, specifically the identified appropriate zoning. Therefore, the proposed rezoning is not supported by the master plan. Now, in terms of the third criteria, and this is a little bit more straightforward. Have the conditions changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted? Or was there a mistake in the zoning ordinance that justified the amendment? We found that there has not been a mistake in the city's previous actions such as a rezoning that is contrary to that established zoning pattern. In fact, you know, the subject parcel here is very consistent with the zoning zoning plan and zoning map in Garden City. In addition, the master plan is fresh. It was originally adopted in 2015 and then was amended in 2017. So we're not talking about a long period of time that the city hasn't investigated the appropriateness of your master plan. And the next criteria is whether the amendment would create an inequitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than merely grant special privileges. In fact, we do not believe that the zoning ordinance has created an inequitable situation because there are a lot of properties nearby and in fact adjacent with the same zoning, the current zoning. And in fact, the proposed rezoning could be construed to grant special privileges because the property owner would be legally allowed to establish uses that are not anywhere, you know, legally near this this location or this portion of the city. The next question relates to exclusionary zoning, and we are not aware of any exclusionary zoning issues associated with the recall. The next is whether the amendment would set an inappropriate precedent resulting in the need to correct future planning mistakes. We suggest that by granting a rezoning that is contrary to the zoning map pattern and contrary to the future land use map, which is what the city would be doing if they approved this rezoning, it could actually lead to an inappropriate precedent by allowing the proliferation of high-intensity uses in this area of the city. The next question is related to whether the proposed rezoning is consistent with the zoning classifications of the surrounding land, which I think I've covered. There's no C3 zoning nearby. And then could all requirements in the proposed zoning classification be complied with on the subject parcel? Due to the size of this subject site, we do believe that most, if not all, of the zoning standards would be complied with on the subject parcel. So this is not something that leads us to suggest that a rezoning would be inappropriate. So in terms of our recommendation, we've summarized the reasons that we're suggesting that planning commission should vote to recommend denial of the proposed rezoning in that it is inconsistent with the basic intent of the zoning ordinance, incompatible, the characteristics of the requested zoning are incompatible with the scale of the area, inconsistent with the future land use maps designated categories of CBD and Flexible Residential, that the requested rezoning is incompatible with the future land use concept of traditional land use planning, that a C3 rezoning would be contrary to the advised CBD and R2/R3 zoning districts of the zoning plan, and that the requested zoning would be inconsistent with the surrounding zoning classification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Next, we'll open it up, open up the public hearing. If you wish to speak, of course, you can click on the raised hand feature on your screen and you'll be called on. You'll have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Please introduce yourself, give your street name before making your comment. This is only a time to make a comment, not to receive or have questions answered by the planning commission. So we'll open the public hearing to public comments. Does anyone wish to make a comment on the subject? Seeing none. I'll ask again, does anyone wish to make a comment at the public hearing? I see no one wants to make a comment, so we'll close the public hearing at this time. Do we have any written communications with comments?
Um, we do not, no written communications. I believe the applicant has requested to make a statement. He said, he sent a question in the question-answer section here down here. We can bring him as in a panel if you'd like.
Uh, yeah, why don't, why don't we do that? Okay, do I do that or do you do?
Oh, I got it. He's gonna be coming in here on your screen. All right, Mr. Kanda, you're muted currently. I'm gonna unmute there. All right. So we should be able to hear the applicant now.
I can't hear anyone.
Mr. Kanda, can you hear us?
I'm not hearing him. His mic doesn't appear to be muted.
Nope, I unmuted, so. Mr. Kanda, are you there? See if you can adjust your microphone, move it a little bit closer.
Is anyone getting his audio?
No.
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 I apologize. Are you able to hear me at this point?
Oh, yep, I can hear him.
Oh, we can hear.
Okay. I'm sorry, the Zoom meeting software changed my participant ID. I had to dial back in since I don't have a microphone or camera on this computer. I do apologize.
Well, I'm glad we got.
I appreciate it. I just wanted to give you some insight into why I actually applied for the zoning. As some of you may or may not know, I've operated a hobby-type business in Garden City for a number of years. And I wanted to renovate this existing property to accommodate expansion of that business on that corner. Where the, and my initial inquiry was that it was not going to be an issue just prior to this rezoning request. So it was suggested that because we would have portions of this business as an outdoor venue, in other words, a radio-controlled car racetrack in the back empty lot would be considered a open-air business, which required a different type of zoning. And for example, would fit into the same type of zoning as the miniature golf that's at the corner of Central and Ford Road. And since I was told that no variance was being granted on C2, that I would have to request a zoning, rezoning to C3. That's the entire purpose of my request for rezoning, to be honest with you.
So your, your only outside activity would be the remote control cars?
That is correct, sir.
Currently, if someone would correct me on this, under C2, it says that open-air businesses are permitted as a special land use. Under C2.
Right.
I quite honestly asked that question before filing for rezoning, and I was told no, and that rezoning would be the only way. That's why we're all here. Otherwise, I would have never done this.
I understand. The problem with having a rezoning like this is that not only does it allow you to have your business operate, but it would allow any of the types of businesses as defined in a C3 also to operate in that location. And it would make for a much more intense business climate than I think we're looking for. And it certainly wouldn't be in line with the current future land use map or the master plan. But I don't see why, if that's your only issue, that this wouldn't be a special land use under C2.
Quite honestly, that was, the result, this rezoning application was a result of several phone calls and several conversations regarding this. I was in a bit of a panic when I was told that any outdoor use would not be accommodated in anything other than C3. That's partially why I halted construction and everything else. Otherwise, most likely, I would have had this project finished by now. So I've spent the last three months doing nothing, waiting for this meeting. I apologize if I've wasted time. The other suggestion was that perhaps a rezoning wouldn't be granted, but a conditional rezoning to only allow C3, the application of open air in C3 would be granted.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I fail to understand why if this would be considered an open-air business, why you wouldn't be allowed to file for a special land use. And as opposed to just a straight permitted use. Sarah, are you?
So, yep, I think you.
Do you, do you concur with what I'm saying, or?
I see that the open-air business use is especially induced in both C2 and C3. Um, I am going to see if I can look at the applicant's description of the use a little bit more because.
I might, Sarah, I might be able to add a little bit to this.
Sure.
I've been involved kind of cursorily on this with Mario. What, one of the comments when I had talked to him about this request was that the applicant also was, you know, I thought, trying to go through the rezoning process as opposed to special land use because he was thinking kind of of the future. If, you know, if this was not always a hobby spot for the drones and remote-controlled cars, then, you know, the marketability of the property as a C3 is what I believe was discussed. I wasn't, I wasn't a part of the conversations, but that was what I was told when I asked about that with Mario.
If I might, after I was told, the only method If I might, after I was told the only method was to go for a C3 rezoning to achieve what I was trying to do, I did make the comment, well, if it's granted, it might enhance the property as well. That was my only consideration. This is the only time that I have ever tried to rezone a property in all of the property that I've redeveloped and that I own. I have absolutely no interest in rezoning this if I can achieve the same goal in another method that would have been quicker or easier, quite honestly.
Yeah, I think it probably would be, well, definitely easier because I don't see that we have a lot of support for rezoning it to a C3. And I think if you're just talking about remote control cars, there might be some screening required from the surrounding areas. But other than that, you know, and consideration about noise, this would certainly be something that could be discussed.
Chairman, I'm sorry to interject, but I'm looking through the ordinance, and I wonder if the terms open air business and outdoor recreation facility are actually getting confused here? Because an outdoor recreation facility is a special land use in the C3 district only?
In C3, so this wouldn't be considered an open air business? It would be an outdoor recreation area?
I, I, I'm sorry that I don't know the correspondence in the background because of that emergency situation. But is that something that was discussed, Mr. Kanda?
To be honest with you, these conversations are three months ago. I don't recall if it was open air business or if it was outdoor recreation. Most likely, that would make more sense. I wish Mario was here. It's unfortunate what occurred, but neither here nor there. That is entirely possible. I may be confusing the two terms, and if so, I do apologize.
Yeah, I think, I'm happy to pull up that description again of outdoor recreation facility, if everyone would bear with me for just one moment, and it's worth our time. Okay. Let me pull this up. I miss having the big binder with me right now. I'm not, I'm not the. Exactly. I know where everything is in the binder. Okay, just a moment. Okay, so I think it's not an exhaustive list of the types of uses that qualify as an outdoor recreation facility, but it says outdoor recreation facilities such as, but not limited to skate facilities, courses for ORVs and snowmobiles, campgrounds, baseball facilities, and swimming pools shall comply with the following regulations. And then it provides specific development standards. So, for example, a bowling alley comes next under indoor recreation facilities. So indoor and outdoor recreation facilities are similarly treated. And those are the examples that are given of outdoor recreation facilities. And indoor recreation facilities are things like bowling establishments, indoor archery ranges, indoor tennis courts, skating rinks, and similar recreation uses. So, you know, again.
The thing is, the outdoor recreation items you mentioned all dealt with full-size vehicles as opposed to hobby. And I do believe that hobby is allowed in a C1 or C2. Now, I don't know about outdoor hobby, but hobby stores are allowed.
Yeah, and here's, I think, I think in past kind of determinations, when you blur the line between the kind of sales component and retail component itself, where someone's coming in to simply buy the hobby good, rather than, you know, use it on site, that's, I remember, you know, where we've had a lot of questions in the past. So I don't know if this is the same type of a situation where kind of that flexibility is what's blurring the line, or if it really is kind of that outdoor component as the petitioner suggested. I the, oh, the open air businesses are defined in the definition section of the ordinance? And then the outdoor recreation is not. So those uses I listed here as an example are from the site development standard section of the ordinance. So again.
Operation isn't defined as an open air business. It's not part of that definition.
I, I think that, I think that there's a couple of, a couple of options. And I, you know, I really would defer also to Clerk Miller, you know, with his experience, and also, you know, this is a city clerk here. If there's, if there's confusion or concern that there was a, you know, misadministration of the actual application in terms of the use interpretation, then, you know, the applicant could ask that the request be tabled, and more written clarification in terms of the use interpretation could be provided to the planning commission. Now, that, I think, is kind of to be unpacked separately from the rezoning request, in that when you're considering the rezoning request, as you mentioned, Chairman, you're not, you're not only considering the use of land that the petitioner says that they want to establish, but rather all of the uses within the C3. So.
Well, would you, you would recommend that we act on the current request before we consider other options? Or just table the whole issue so that it can be determined what is actually needed?
I, Clerk Miller, I don't know if you have an opinion?
I mean, I, what is before us this evening is a rezoning, and that's what has been applied for. One of the, one of the concerns I have is, you know, the, the remote control car aspect, I don't know what all has been discussed and what, what are the plans. This is directly next door to apartments and one house. And so that is a concern I have, just in the fact that even to grant a special land use, you have to make sure that you're complying with all the, you know, you're not hindering the rights of the adjacent property owners. And I don't know, no, I don't know the level of what these cars do. I've never seen this, so I'm not sure. But I assume they make noise. I assume there'd be groups of people out there. And that's where I'm a little bit hesitant to say that even to recommend a site plan, a special land use, you know, the special land use also could tie with the property, and the next person could run it differently than the person making the application. So I, the thing is, this is why Mario was going down this route. It is an appropriate request, and all of the, you know, all of the legalities were handled to go forward with the, you know, with a rezoning application. It is, you know, it's, to me, as Sarah made in her report, a C3 use allows for all the other C3 uses that can occur there, is one item. And then also, as you look at the, you know, the beginning of the CBD district at the north end there, is C3 the best rezoning for that? And in essence, is a really kind of a spot zone, which doesn't, you know, which our master plans supports not having spot zoning. So those are, I think, a few things I could add. And, you know, we could go forward looking at a possible special land use, but I just don't know enough about what is proposed for that use to make a recommendation to go that route. But the rezoning is before us.
Well, I think probably, you're right. I think probably we should act on the proposal that's before us. And if there can be other remedies, they can be looked at later. But I think we should consider the rezoning request right now.
Chairman, if I may, I found language in that definition of open air business that I think actually probably is why this use that the petitioner described was, is not actually an open air business. Because in the definition, it says any business that is conducted primarily out of doors. So in the description of the proposed use, it sounded like the outdoor component is actually accessory to the indoor use, rather than the primary location of the business. So based on the verbal representation, to me, it does not sound like an open air business.
It might not fit that definition.
Right.
Yeah. I think, I think we should go ahead and act on the current request, though. And if, if there are other ways to approach this in the past, in the future, then that can be looked at separately. But any of the other commissioners have any comments or questions?
No.
No.
Well, my question, Fred, would be if this is an outside business, of course, it is Michigan, so we're only looking at a three to four month window where it's going to happen. We do have no law, noise ordinances in the city in that business district for operating hours. I think that what was put before us was a vote on C3. We should act on that, but I don't think Mr. Kanda is out of options. I think that he should be able to revisit this in the C2 capacity that is listed at now. Should be able to come to a land use agreement of some type with a little bit more information. It's unfortunate that this is how it was presented to him, but none of us were aware of that. What we are aware of is, are we going to allow a C3 where there's a C2?
Well, this particular property is surrounded by C2 and R1.
Right.
Bowling districts, and C3, I don't believe, would fit in that as well as not being part of the future land use or the master plan. So I, personally, I don't think it's, it's a good, I would, I would be opposed to the rezoning. Does anyone else have a comment? If not, does someone want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to deny the request to rezone to C3 from C2 on the property.
Based on?
The incompatibility with the, with the surrounding businesses.
Your support?
Support.
We're voting on a recommendation here to deny to the city council, because in the end, it's their final decision, but the recommendation is to deny motions made and seconded. Any comments? Second, yes, Brian? I can't hear you.
Oh, we do have a hand raised. Kim Dold, our DDA director, I can bring her in.
Okay.
She's muted, Matt.
Kim, will you unmute?
I did. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you now.
Okay. First, I missed the very beginning of the meeting. I was having trouble getting on, but I do have just a quick question, because it appears to me that there is some confusion as to whether Mr. Kanda actually needed to apply for a rezoning in the first place. That there's confusion as to, did he need to get this property rezoned? Or can we look at a special land use in C2? So I'm kind of concerned that there was that confusion there, and it doesn't appear to me that it's been cleared up, that he was given the right information to begin with in order to apply for rezoning. Secondly, I just want to say that I sincerely hope that we're able to come to some kind of agreement with Mr. Kanda for using this property, because this plan of his for the old Maplewood property is going to be such an asset to the entire city, not just downtown, but the entire city. And we really need to, to work with him and see if we can't possibly do a special land use down there.
Well, that's something we can, that can be looked at, but right now, we're just acting on what's before us. So.
Well, I understand that, Commissioner May. That's why I'm asking, though, does the commission need to take a step back and understand whether this should have been applied for at all? Or did Mr. Kanda receive possibly incorrect information on it? And also, the other thing moving forward, he's already, he hasn't been working for a while, so, you know, if there's some way that the commission could agree to meet again sooner rather than later to benefit him. But again, going back to what you said, I understand that's what's on the agenda tonight, and you need to act on that. However, I guess I just want some clarification that it really should be being acted on, that it was the correct information given to him to begin with, and that's what the application should have been.
Well, well, we can't really say that the, the information is incorrect or not at this time. All we can do is edit on the application before us.
Can he call a special meeting, though, if something, if you can move the other part forward?
Well, if I could add, I don't, there was, you know, initially, there's some confusion that Mr. Kanda came forward with, but Sarah clarified, in my opinion, about the primary versus the accessory type use in the definition. I think that, that is where, where the open air business is defined as, if you can think of a business that is, is open air, putt putt golf, a nursery, you know, with the landscape yard, all those things that are conducted normally outside. So I believe that's what was, you know, discussed at the time as being, you know, if you're asking for a special land use of an open air business, our definition doesn't say that, you know, it's kind of a secondary use or not. Everything that he wants to do up to the portion of the outdoor cars, though, is an approved use in the C2 district. He can complete a CFO and complete all of the work to carry out a majority of the plan. I don't know exactly I, I don't know exactly what, what portion of the component of this outdoor racing is. So that, you know, that is what leads me to believe that Mario did give the proper information. The confusion, we were confused because we didn't have all the information until Ms. Traxler gave that, I think, the definition that clarified it in my mind. The route that was selected was for rezoning to see if it could occur.
Yeah, I think it's very, very possible that Mr. Ortega felt that this was the, the proper way to go based on the language of our, our zoning code. But if he's not here, we can't really speak for him.
Yes. The other thing is, is that if you're, if you want to, if we go down another path of a special land use, unfortunately, it does require another public hearing and notification. So that by law, we can't move up meetings to accommodate it because of, of the fact that by law, we wouldn't be able to do so. Special land uses do require public notice directly to the property owners and also a public notice post in the paper. So unfortunately, anywhere that can, it can occur on a speedier path. But like I said, the building can, and should be able to be completed. The, the use is permitted, everything is permitted except for this component of the outside issue to the east.
So Mr. Kanda, if I could ask you what-
No, you can't, Ms., Ms. Dole.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm afraid you can't go back and forth with Mr. Kanda. If you want to ask, ask a question, go ahead.
No, it would really be directed toward him, so I'll give him a call tomorrow.
Well, if I might make a comment, if my use isn't allowed, then I just need to turn to a different property. I really don't have a choice. It's unfortunate, but I would just close this building up and let it sit until I decided to do something else with it. I wouldn't continue with it at all. And that would mean I would move my business out of Garden City, period. So, I mean, that would be the end result of it and it's unfortunate because I, I was born in this city, for God's sakes. But if it can't be done here, then it can't be done.
Well, Mr. Kanda, we're not saying it can't be done, but we're just talking about right now dealing with the issue of the request for rezoning to a C3. We have a motion on the table now to deny, make the recommendation to deny a request to rezone to C3. And I believe we should call it to question. Would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye. Mr. Kanda, the requested rezon to a C3, recommendation is to deny, but that doesn't mean your options are closed. You, I would recommend you go back and talk to either Mr. Ortega or someone else at the building department, if he's not available, and look into some other options such as possibly special land use or possibly a conditional rezoning. Those would, those would be my suggestions, but-
Chairman May? If, if I may, I'm going to type my email address into the chat and Mr. Kanda can send me an email and we can speak just in case I'm not able to hook him up with Mario in the next couple of business days. Because I, I think we're not anticipating Mario being back probably until next Wednesday or so. So I hope that's helpful and I can work with, work with Mario offline too, just sort of as a go-between.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kanda, is that, you understand what's, what she's saying?
I do, sir, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hopefully we can work this out for you. I, I think it's probably something that, you know, can be worked out. Possibly with some additional restrictions, I don't know. I mean, there are concerns about being close to residential districts and I know there's concerns about light and noise and the hours of operation too. So these are all things that would have to be considered. But if you contact them, I'm sure we can get all rolling on that.
I've already sent off an email to Sarah, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, moving on, do you have any other business? Brian, do we have anything?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, Sarah? Did you have anything else to bring before the commission?
No, I'm not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Mativier, do you have any thing to bring up for, in starting planning and zoning matters?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Walls?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Mr. Kalitas?
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Turnbull?
Uh, no, I don't, Fred.
Uh, Mr. Miller?
Uh, nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, Sarah, did you?
No, thank you.
Okay, Brian, anything?
No.
Okay then, the next regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 9th, 2020. And if there are no further amendments, business meetings adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Bye. Your summers are going well, okay, bye.
Bye.
All right.